Hey, welcome to December first meeting. All right, call a meeting to order. I pleasantly leave. All right, Kevin, I'd like to ask you. I'd like to ask for consent motion for one point zero three. Through the regular board meeting agenda, on the recommendation of superintendent to approve December first twenty twenty five regular board meeting. There any questions on tonight's agenda? Any changes? All in favor?
I think both.
I'd like to ask for consent motion for item one point zero four approval of the regular board meeting minutes on the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the November seventeenth. Twenty twenty five regular board meeting minutes. Any questions on the minutes for November seventeen? All in favor?
I think both.
Okay, we have one signed in, but we're gonna, that's for a little later, so. With that. I'm right here.
So as of from last meeting, the middle school and high school have continued building for Gillem as usual. Gold blue trade for this month is understanding, so teachers will be on the lookout for students demonstrating this quality and they'll be handing out gold blue cards to recognize their efforts. Last week, Drama Club wrapped up its musical production of Newsies, which was a huge success and included the hard work of my students in a wide variety of roles. Last week, Big Blue Little Blue also held its first meetings, and it'll be picking up again this week after the break, continuing to build connections between our older and younger students. Today, the American Red Cross held a blood drive sponsored by the Girl Scouts with many Girl Scouts volunteering to help make the event run smoothly. Students and teachers have just returned from Thanksgiving break and are settling back into their routines as they work up and learn and so went to break, which begins September twenty second, December twenty second. Lastly, winter sports games are starting up this week, bringing lots of excitement and school cheer.
All right, good report.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, Charlie.
All done, all right, well done, thank you. John, I don't know if you know, you are a member of NISPA also, so. Are you gonna talk about Newsies?
Um, I was gonna mention it, but.
I just wanna, I just wanna echo what, what Johnny just said relative to the play Newsies, it was an incredible, great presentation, great show. I got to it Friday night, couldn't get to the other days, but what a great time it was. I think everybody else made it as well, a great time. Thank you to all participating. I understand. All right. Anything else? With that, Matt?
Yep.
There you go. We're gonna turn to you, Matt, and we have a little bit of a presentation that you're going to talk about.
Yeah, just a little bit. So my name is Matthew Kratz, I'm the president of the Geneseo PTA. So we're very fortunate today, one of our educators, Katie Shoup, has just been a phenomenal member of our PTA. Brought in a lot of new ideas, and we had a really successful last year at the PTA, we're hoping to have another successful PTA. And representative Susan Brown is here, she's from the Geneseo Valley Regional PTA, and she will be presenting award to Katie, so I'm gonna give, and then we're gonna do a little bit cake afterwards, if you don't mind. I'm gonna give it forward to Susan, thank you.
I am Susan Brown, I am the awards chair for the Geneseo Valley PTA and the field support coordinator for New York State PTA. Geneseo Valley PTA provides support for all the PTAs in this seven county region. Each year, our PTA region honors an educator who demonstrates excellence in education through their work with children and youth, and is an active PTA unit member. This award was established in nineteen eighty six, and it was named for J. Ernest DeBois, a social studies teacher in the Rochester City School District and an active and committed PTA leader. He was chosen the Rochester City School District Teacher of the Year by his peers. His commitment to PTA included working at the regional level, including as region director, and at the state level, eventually as a state vice president. Ernest has exemplified PTA in education in both his professional and volunteer lives, as he has worked for all children and youth. This year, we would like to celebrate speech-language pathologist Katie Shoup as our J. Ernest DeBois award winner. The PTA pointed out that the success of the Geneseo PTA during the twenty twenty four twenty five academic year can be directly relate, can be directed at Katie's sheer will to us, the PTA as a vehicle to bring positive programming. Her contributions include organizing holiday shop, the hero dance, and pastries with Pierce Peeps programs. Further, they commented that her ability to network and resource has given our PTA a leg up to creating events and forecasting future activities, which have increased the quality of our student programming. They also recognized her work on the Capital Improvement Project Committee and the Building Planning Team. You are truly fortunate to have such a committed staff member, who is also a dedicated and highly valuable PTA member. Our mission at PTA is to be a powerful voice for all children, a relevant resource for families and communities, and a strong advocate for the education and well-being of every child. Kaylee, Katie truly represents that mission. Katie, wanna come up? And that picture.
Hundred percent deserved.
All right, here we go, one, two, three. Got one this way.
Got John's photo by me.
Hold on, I'm gonna get some on my phone. Got it.
Katie, congratulations.
We brought cake.
Do you wanna put chutney cakes?
So you can run ahead.
Okay, okay.
Take a look, Chris. Quick, three. All right, with that, I'm gonna. Send your mic for an update on our capital project.
All right, I think you guys all know these two gentlemen very well, Ted from SEI and Mike from Campus. The benefits of bringing back, all right, the same folks that we've worked with before is they understand the district and the needs, where we've been and where we need to go. So I'm just gonna take you through some basic updates, and we're gonna have these gentlemen here to answer any specific questions about the project. Be pacing around here at the same time, too. So right in front of you, you have a packet here that was created by Campus and the work from SEI that shows, basically, it's a calendar, it's the scope of the work that's going to be done, and it's outlined by the timeline or the calendar of events. So feel free to refer to that as I go through some of these basic updates. So starting off, the inception of the project began back way before two thousand twenty four, but in October of two thousand twenty four, it was voted for by the public to be a twenty-three-point-nine million dollar proposed project, very close to that amount, with the title of Save Campus, Enhancing Security and Enriching Student Life Capital Brutal Project. And so there's been a lot of work since then behind the scenes, and a lot of people don't always realize that need to take place in order to get to where we are today. So since that vote, basically, the scope of the work has been solidified. You know, the amount of time it takes for these guys to be in the spaces, to understand the nuances of the different parts of the project, mapping out the phases, keeping them sessioned and creating that calendar. Lots of discussions about what happens if the bid comes back and it's lower than what we anticipate. We then have what are called add alternates, so those have been designated. So lots of conceptual drawings and designs have been made, as well as some renderings, and I'm really excited to show you some of the renderings here tonight. I think you're gonna be very impressed, they're, they're pretty beautiful, so. So the next phase here is that the bid process is at its point where we're gonna be finalizing that, and I'm gonna take you through what the timeline for that is in just a second. So as you know, there are four main component areas, but I say plus one because there's a lot of miscellaneous stuff that's going on as well. So obviously, we know about the front entrance, it's a complete redesign for security enhancements. We have our main gymnasium work. Our UPK art and music wing is getting a complete overhaul or redesign. We have some work being done specifically in the back of the auditorium, and then just some general improvements, which we know we have our four main areas, and then, again, a lot of miscellaneous stuff. So before I go into each one of these individually, just wanna take you through a general timeline. As you know, SCD did give, did give the final approval for the project, so we moved forward in that going out to bid in this next January, January twenty twenty six. So we're gonna be putting out. So there's gonna be a lot of contractors and subcontractors bidding on this, we'll make a decision on who comes back with a successful bid. We're gonna be looking, everything stays on pace, and I think we're actually a little ahead of schedule. But the reason, I think I mentioned this before, but the reason why we're waiting until January is because we're gonna get the most amount of competition within the bidding process at that point. We hope to break ground in April of twenty twenty six, this next spring. And the duration is gonna go from beginning of April, right on the first, through the end of December of twenty twenty seven. Okay, with a final closeout, hopefully, right now, we're aiming for March of twenty twenty eight. So what happens between twenty twenty seven and December and March twenty twenty eight? Well, there's always the final closeouts, right? There's the punch list, there's inspection, there's training that needs to take place. So lots of things happen with the final closeout of twenty twenty eight. And again, you guys know construction, it's dependent upon many factors. So there'll be many things that are going to drive this timeline, whether it moves up or slows down, and we, you know, we always know sometimes construction takes a little longer than what we ever anticipate. Hopefully, things go well, and, you know, a lot of planning upfront's gonna help us stay on that timeline. So going into each one of them, the front entrance, you know that there's gonna be a complete redesign of that main lobby. Right now, we have people, our visitors being buzzed in to a very small area, and then they come in and sign in at the, you know, the, the front desk there. But the redesign allows them to come in to that space, sign in at a desk where there's still secure doors in front of them. So it increases the enhancement of the security features. But it also moves the SRO office to a centralized location, right? So that's gonna be right off the main lobby, as we know. So the main timeline for that is we're aiming for June twenty twenty seven through August of twenty twenty seven, so that we are open and ready to go with our front main entrance for the start of the twenty twenty seven school year. Okay, some considerations that came in, obviously, we wanna do the main bulk of the work during the school year, or not, not to minimize the disruption, so we're not doing it during the school year, so we're trying to do the bulk of the work during the summer. So other things we're gonna have to consider is temporary alternate visitor entrances during that time, where the front entry is down, which we're looking at the middle school, high school by the tech wing, and the elementary entrance is gonna be by the elementary, or the elementary doors. So we're looking at what is the best entrance in terms of the ones where the kids come right off the bus, or the ones where they go down by the courtyard. We're also gonna be looking at ADA access as well, because no, we know we have steps, so for wheelchair accessibility is to see the, kind of problem solve what we can do in that area as well. The main gymnasium, we know that one of the main reasons why this rose to the top of the list as a priority for this project is due to structural issues. And so this addresses the existing structural issues from the way it was built originally, it modernizes the space, as we said, for student and community use. And it's going to be adding additional seating, so we're gonna be reusing the structure of the bleachers, but new bleacher tops where the, the students will be sitting, and it'll be adding on some, so it's actually gonna be adding some additional space in there for seating. Timeline for that is, because it's the largest part of the project and the main bulk of the work that needs to be done, it's going to be from the beginning of the project to the end of the project, all the way through. Okay, so that's gonna take the entire timeline. And the considerations, there is asbestos, some abatement that needs to take place. Luckily, it's in the soffits around the roof, so nothing inside, it's gonna be outside. We're gonna be looking at trying to take that down in a way, and which, because the project is starting right at the beginning of April, it actually is, works out perfectly in the timeline, because we're gonna be going on spring break right around that time. So the bulk of the asbestos, asbestos basement's gonna, abatement is going to be taking place during that time. Obviously, we have to consider, what are we gonna do with our PE classes during that time in sports? There's a lot of discussions around that, as well as the design elements for functionality. For instance, we recently met with a vendor that, you know, we're looking at what, this, these are decisions we're gonna have to make when it comes down to it, is the scoreboard. Are we looking at a regular digital scoreboard? Or are we looking at this as potentially a space where is, we wanna make it more functional than just phys ed classes? And sporting events, like, are we going to have other events in there where you want a digital scoreboard? Or a picture scoreboard, a video scoreboard, where you can actually put videos up? So there could be other events. Graduation possibly could be held in there at, at one point. So lots of discussions to see what kind of considerations we wanna make for the final product of the certain things that go in there, such as the scoreboard. Here's a rendering. This is, this would be if you're coming in the main back entrance. You could see there'd be like a ticket booth on the left, and you could see the renderings right there, they're beautiful, beautiful. You could see that, you know, the blue, the archways, they all match with designs of the gray on the floor, with a nice sharp wooden wall. You'll get a closer look at that here in a second. This would be another one. So the designers got creative, if you can kinda see the Blue Devil horns got subtly woven in there along the outside of the Blue Devil design. This would be down around the corner of the gym, it's a real main statement of where you are, you're in Blue Devil territory. And so I just did some close up, so you could see that, but the design elements are really woven nicely throughout the entire area. Again, just renderings, but we're looking to input that. Moving on to UPK art and music, we know we're gonna have a complete renovation of those classrooms, which is gonna allow us to bring in two additional UPK spaces. So we're bringing the students from Pride and Joy to On Campus, we're looking at those two UPK classrooms. And because of that complete overhaul, the elementary art and music classrooms are going to be redone. You're gonna see renderings of those here in just a second. Timeline for that is, again, looking at the main consideration of making sure that we're ready for fall of twenty twenty seven to bring those kids on campus. We need to make sure that we're finished, we're working closely with SEI and Campus to make sure that this is closed out in August, with still having enough time for teachers to get in there and get their spaces set up, we know how important that is. And so we're looking at the disruptions being at the end of the school year in May-ish. So looking at additional spaces on where we could put those classrooms temporarily, the art and the music, which we're gonna work out, and they'll be ready to roll, hopefully in the fall of twenty twenty seven. So here are some renderings of those spaces, you could see the UPK up at the top left, nice wide-open music space at the top right, and the art at the bottom. Okay, auditorium. Improvements include wheelchair accessibility around the bottom. Right now, we do have accessibility come into the top, but there's no great way to get folks that are, need that wheelchair accessibility down to the stage level. So there's going to be some adjustments out back. We have, you know, that there is a ton of props for the plays and the musicals back there. And so storage and organization is something that needs to be addressed, which will overall enhance the functionality for performances and events. And the timeline for that, hot off the press, was originally going to be this next, going into this next summer, but some adjustments just recently had to be made. And so that was just changed recently to be looking at next summer, going into next school year, so. So looking at July twenty twenty seven to October of twenty twenty seven, obviously, considerations here. We know the big thing, we just all experienced it recently, right, is the practices that are going to take place. But we did need to minimize the disruptions during the school year, so obviously, we're gonna be using the summer as much as possible. Looking at the usage throughout the school year, but also the fall musical. We're gonna have to be looking at an alternate practice location. Hopefully, if everything stays on a timeline, we're still gonna be able to have the performance in there. But we'll, we'll have to look at, if we do stay on the same schedule, maybe there's an adjustment that needs to be made. But I know that these things are also scheduled around the kids' busy, other extracurricular activities, so some discussions are gonna have to be had about that as well. No renderings for that, but just wanna go quickly into the general improvements. This isn't all of them, but we are looking at locker room upgrades that go along with the gymnasium. There's some HVAC work that needs to be done. Right now, we have two old boilers and one high-efficiency boiler, so by replacing another one's gonna give us two. That is gonna allow us on most days during the winter to heat this entire complex with just the two high-efficiency boilers. But when it gets down really cold and we need some supplemental heat, that old boiler that is still functional will kick in and supply the supplemental heat that needs to be done. Some lighting and flooring and aesthetics and redesign of the back entrance, which I'm gonna show you here. Timeline, the different parts of these are spaced out throughout the project. And some considerations are, obviously, improving the efficiency, making sure that we're set with our heating. Right now, our boilers are old, so we want the security of knowing that they're gonna function, but also some savings in the long haul with the high-efficiency boiler. Obviously, timing of the locker rooms, that's still up in the air at this point. There are a lot of discussion that still needs to be had about when those locker rooms are gonna be done. So we actually have a meeting tomorrow to talk about that a little bit more. And then, of course, improving the aesthetics and functions of the rear entrance, so check this out, pretty impressed by this. So this is the back corner, you can see the doors in the bottom loft are really gonna serve as an egress to allow people to exit the main gymnasium there. You're gonna see the front entrance in a better angle, but you can see what it does is creates an actual space back there. Right now, we just have grass, and we run into, from what I understand, some people not knowing what the main door is, they're going out back, because we have the doors for the steam. We have just on the other side of the concession stand, we have steps that go up to doors. This is going to give us a fresh look, well, before I do that, it's gonna give you a night look there, it's pretty impressive. The main door, that's an old rendering for where the main door is, but I just wanna show you the look at night. You can see the beautiful design of the blue tiles, I can't speak to that, but these guys, I'm sure can. The materials are made out of, but what it does nicely is it ties in those wooden structures that were on our, from our old project, and ties it in, so it really brings the aesthetic together quite nicely and blends it. So here's two different looks at the rear entrance. There's the rear side view from the side angle, and then the, the rendering that has our branding right there to allow for a direct and pretty obvious entrance to our back, while still bringing in the color scheme of the tiles that are there. Here's an alternate rendering, which has a different brand for our Geneseo, the G, with Geneseo up on the glass. Turn it over to you guys for any questions you may have at this time.
Questions? Is this on the website? Yeah?
Not yet.
Okay.
So one thing I wanted to address with that is because some timeline things are still kinda going to fluctuate naturally between now and, well, they could fluctuate, you know, throughout the course of the project, but between now and the official time that they go out for bid, yeah, and we're having another, a meeting tomorrow to discuss a couple of different areas, so we don't wanna publish those yet, but I wanted to bring those to your attention, 'cause it at least gives you the scope of the project in the different areas, as well as some, most of the timelines are correct. Yeah.
Can, can, I don't know, Mike, it's you, but can you address during construction and deconstruction and construction, the access in and out of instructional vehicles while students are in session and so on?
Sure, and on the front page of the package you guys received is our site logistics line. So that's, this goes into the project manual, and we've actually specified on here where some temporary entrances are gonna be, where we are telling the contractors they can arrive, where signage on site's gonna be for wayfinding for everybody, different drop-off points, temporary stop signs you might need to install where kids are crossing specifically back by the football field. We're gonna try to keep the traffic as possible. We're gonna keep ourselves tucked into that back corner, our trailers will be located back there along with the material staging area. Trafficking and out of the site up and down the driveway will be, you know, not, not a daily occurrence, like the big vehicles, obviously, the workers coming, our pickup trucks, yeah, but big deliveries will be scheduled, so we'll make sure that safety.
Can you address the, uh? Certainly, over the new gym, we're gonna have a roof restoration. How about the rest of the roofing? Is that part of potential contingency funding and so on, or?
Yes, so part of our financial planning and how we build the project out is to make sure we go into bid day knowing that we've identified a base bid for it that's under budget, under what we think is, you know, appropriate. And we try to maintain four to five percent, which is where we are right now in this project. So that gives us a little bit of a buffer right away. So we start to identify additional alternates, if price doesn't come in for us. And the roofing has been broken up into four or five different areas, each a different alternate. So we broke it up into bite-sized chunks, so we can back our way into doing as much roofing as we can with any budget that's, that allows. The main base bid area is over the gym area.
Yeah, it's just a parallel to the construction, plus it's all, Eric, it's Mike and Craig. In regards to now that we have pretty much a solid timeline going down, the disruption of our fall sports inside that gymnasium, aggressively are we looking for other spots to hold our sports for the kids for the couple years you're saying? That timeline that the gym is going to be down, where are we, are we finding space available? Are we starting now, or are we finding any space available? Or is everything just gonna be an all-complete away schedule for all the games?
I'll let Craig speak to that in just a second, but in general, this, just, just for clarity, this timeline, it just solidified, literally, just within days, while some adjustments as soon as four or five hours ago. And so, that being said, I know that there's already been some conversations that haven't had, I think Craig can address. But that is our next step to start to lock in some different spaces, but we've already started to brainstorm what they will be. But of course, you know, trying to schedule some, as many away events as we can. I know it's kind of a trade-off, the capital projects and stinks for our own student athletes that can participate in their own space a whole lot, but I'll let Craig.
Yeah, I mean, we will reach out to local schools around us the best we can. We are fortunate this time that we do have a competition-size gym, right, on campus that we can use for certain things. For fall sports, it's probably reading certain that we could use that for, for volleyball in the fall. Winter will be a little tough to use that, we may have to limit spectators for certain things. If we decide to do that, obviously, we'll work closely with the college, which isn't easy to get into a college, because they have teams that might get there, too, but we try to work that to at least get, you know, a couple, two or three games, at least in Geneseo. And that will work with other local schools through that, so. We won't always go away, so like, I would say, you know, if we're playing Hornell or something, and they're supposed to come here, we might try to find someplace closer around us, so we don't have to go to Hornell. So whether it's Abba. Closer around us so we don't have to go to Hornell. So whether it's Abba or Bologna or Mat Wars or something like that. So we're not always traveling to, to the waysites far away.
But certainly it's gonna put not only pressure on locating other locations, but bus drivers and transportation.
Yeah. Will we be able to move like the camera system that's in the existing gym to the?
So we actually already have a huddle camera in the gym, so we're all set.
Yep. I was wondering, you know, if it would be possible to like simulcast it to like the auditorium. You know, so that you could still have spectators in the building, some watching it, you know, on, on the screen in the auditorium while the others are.
We can put it right in the cafeteria and then they can run over and yell at the officials and then on that.
Yeah, yeah. Then go and sign it up.
Yeah, no, definitely.
The other concern I'm sure you're thinking about is the P E classes. Around your schedule.
It is, is this gonna affect the same cohort of kids that was disrupted with the, the last project?
It will be some of them, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Um. So the. With the change in the, in the timeline for the auditorium, is there something else that's gonna take? That place in the? In the twenty twenty six? There is. Uh, that obviously moving to one thing ends with the effect of the schedule. So we're working, we're like Mike said, we're meeting tomorrow. Or we've worked on a new schedule, which we need to review with the team. Uh, but we wanted to review this schedule with you tonight, just to kind of show you where, where we are as we take those last steps. I don't have that copy with me right now, but that, once we solidify that, that'd be. Yeah, I'm sure you're gonna see that. Something, something will take this. Absolutely, yeah. There's some, there's a couple of other things we're gonna have to move on.
So the loaded question is, get your crystal ball out. What kind of? Increases in materials or labor costs that you're, are you seeing on other projects right now? I know that's kind of why we're holding off until January, but.
Yeah, um, so just a quick correction on the dates. We are getting ready to hit the streets on December eleventh. Oh, yeah. Hit with, uh, the invitation of it and documents will be ready then. We have two walkthroughs scheduled, one on either side of the holidays, one on the sixteenth of December, I believe, and one. Get the date in January, which is the sixth, I believe, in January, uh, with a bid opening at the end of January. So that does set us up on that timeline that Mike talked about of getting more favorable pricing. Material costs do continue to go up, um, you know, just from my own experience on current projects. I'm seeing things change over the, over the course of this, just this past year, uh, even less time than that. But the way we've protected you guys and the project is in our estimate, we filled in escalation. So the number that we're going in on bid day, but has all these assumptions built in. So then. When numbers come in where I will call them where they should be or normal, then. We take, we say, we take a breath of fresh air and we maybe grab an alternative to back into the project.
Without over committing yourself, that. Do you feel that the contingencies and the buffers that we put in initially that were still within?
Yes.
Realm of the budget?
Yep, uh, five percent for, is what we maintain, like to maintain throughout the life project for remaining contingency source. The total construction cost is left to the job, take five percent of that, that's what we should have left.
I know there was some additional escalations in there too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make sure I understood correctly. When the main entrance renovation happens, we are talking about two separate entries for visitors, right? So into the middle school or into the elementary, correct?
Correct.
Are, how are we looking at, like right now, everybody who comes into one point of entry, right? And they check in with one person. Are we staging people?
Yeah.
At each of those doors?
Yes.
So is that a potential hiring somebody to do that or, or we don't know that yet?
That's still on the table. I think we can get creative with what that might look like, but hasn't been fully decided for the middle school, high school. Um. You know, we're either gonna send Mike to the elementary side or Mike, who's our front entrance guy, right? Um, to the, um, elementary or middle school, high school, but that, all of those small details haven't been worked out. But the point that we have decided on is that we're still making it a secure, a secure campus and that we have to state somebody. To allow for people to come in and out of the door. And we're already checking people using our raptor system the same way we do now. No more to comment.
Pretty good. I do want to turn it to everybody out here. If any other questions, any of you have before? Does that everybody know? Okay. Good. Like that, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. Good update? More research?
Yeah. Take it away.
Take it away.
All right. Um. Okay, I'll start with, uh, just let everybody know, uh, the transportation software we're looking into. As you know, there are, there are opportunities out there through some different companies, uh, to take a look at. Ways to enhance not just security, but ridership tracking. There's a number of tools that could improve efficiencies, um, provide conveniences for the districts, the families, as well as the drivers. Uh, GPS, things like that. So we're looking, so we did have a presentation by Tyler Technologies, who. Um, really is the umbrella company of several others, um, our traversa being one that we get our main software from. And so they did present to us with, um. Some different versions and some different functionalities of what their technology does. And we're looking to get some quotes, waiting to get some quotes from them to, uh, decide if we're gonna move forward with that. So, uh, we had to make a really difficult decision recently regarding the eighth grade trip to Washington DC. Um, we looked, um, I want to give a lot of credit to the team, uh, who did, uh, spent a lot of time. Working the eighth grade team as well as, uh, you know, like Craig and Megan and everybody else, the counselors, that everyone else that was involved. In taking a look at why our enrollment has been decreasing in this trip over the last couple of years. And it even looking at what is, um. The interest level for this year and out of the seventy students, only thirty five students were able to commit to that. And so even with those thirty five students, there is an initial cost of four hundred and sixty nine dollars. That was assuming we get about forty five students to participate. So because we didn't even get the forty five students to participate and commit to it, that would have increased the cost by roughly a hundred dollars. Taking a pretty close out, five hundred and fifty dollars per student. So, and that is even taking the trip from two nights down to one night. And so with that, we had a big discussion, uh, with the team and as a leadership team. And thinking about the whole point of a class trip is class camaraderie, to have the memory for everybody. So they even looked at diving into why is it that the students that didn't commit to it, why do they not want to participate? And you know, of course, there's a variety of reasons, but you have to understand, you know, the financial component is the reality. That, that's a lot of money. Um, to go on for, if you think about it, you're leaving in the morning, staying overnight one night, and then you're coming back the next night. So, you know, it's just, you know, between twenty four and four and eight hours. But the amount of time in compared to the cost, it, it's a big commitment. So there, after, you know, thoughtful consideration, it was decided that we will be looking into another trip being Niagara Falls. Um, with a Niagara Falls trip, there will be little to no cost to students. Um, through fundraising and other opportunities that, you know, I know GCEF is already committed to, um. And their willingness to help out with trips like this. Uh, so, you know, I think we're gonna be able to increase the amount of students that are interested in participating. Um, so for this year, I can't say it's gonna be like this going forward. We'll still collect, you know, do surveys and collect data and have conversations. Um. Unfortunately, the decision had to be made with that, so. Want to let you know also, we're getting the Hall of Fame process up and running. Alina and I have been getting, uh, working on the process to get that going. Tapping into some people who have some experience and, uh, Gretchen, uh, had a meeting with Mike Salatow recently. And so just getting, helping me to understand what goes into that process, obviously being the first year of working through that. So we're gonna be, next thing is basically setting a timeline, getting the committee together, setting the timeline and, and working through all that needs to take place. My understanding is that it's taken place at different times in the past, different times a year. Um, I know that winter is not always a great time, so I think we're gonna be aiming for a little bit deeper into the spring. To allow for safe travels and, and people to make the travel if they need to, especially family members. I got to experience recently a really cool event. I just wanted to share. I don't know if you guys even know this goes on, maybe you do. Um, but, uh, senior kindergarten day. I thought that was one of the coolest things, uh, to have our seniors calm down. And spend some time with our kindergartners, getting down on the floor with them, doing crafts. It was, I, it was just so neat. I mean, um, you walk in and you can see the seniors that are naturals and then you can see the, the ones that are like, you know, having an awkward conversation. What is the name of this kindergartner? But I just thought it was neat to, to see that connection. Um, I think, you know, the kindergartners really look up to them and it was a great opportunity for the seniors to model the traits. That we're trying to develop in those younger students. So great job to the teachers, uh, that were involved in, um, organizing them. Uh, also a great ornament decorating event for our third graders. Garden club came in. I wasn't able to make that because I had another commitment, but I heard it was a fun event. Ornaments are gonna be on display at the fountain on Main Street. Um. Big Blue Little Blue program, Joanna already let us know, is up and running. What a great win-win. Um, you know, go blue really embodies the traits and attributes we feel that are really important to develop and foster in our students. And again, great way for the, our big blues to model that to our little blues and our little blues, I think, give a lot as well. Um, in contributing to developing these traits as well. So great job. Also doing a series of stat, staff chats that have been very well attended by different groups. I have one more coming up with. Um, our instructional staff and then, uh, started, had my first coffee and soup, S U P E. Uh, for parents to come in tonight. Uh, didn't get a, get a very good turnout, but I'll offer it again in the morning. So we have an evening and a morning event on, uh, morning one on Friday for people to come in. I give a couple of updates on district initiatives and give an opportunity for questions. Um, and then last but not least, uh, I think we've already said it a couple of times, but I want to give a lot of credit to all of our. Folks that, uh, or all of our students that participated in the musical. It was a phenomenal event. I was, I had heard about the talent in this district, but until you see it, you don't understand. Like I cannot believe how well our students can sing and dance and put all that together in just a couple of months. So huge shout out to Allison Shields and Marissa Brinka for, uh, bringing that team together and putting on a wonderful show. So great job to them. That's all I have.
Good. Any questions? Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Turn to committee reports, uh, audit finance meet?
Yeah, audit and finance committee, uh, met tonight before the board meeting. Uh, we went over the extra class audit and the, uh. The proposal that we have for us tonight to approve. As far as extra class audits go, it's pretty clean. No significant signings. Good. Uh, but then we talked about, uh, the upcoming timeline for contract negotiations. It's upcoming. Uh, and we had a recommendation to have an executive session to discuss, uh, additional parameters for negotiations.
Okay, at the next meeting or?
If we can do it tonight, then we could add that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll, uh, we'll add that. To the end of the meeting to discuss negotiation parameters. Anything else? All set?
Yep.
Thank you. Kevin, uh, policy. I see some first reads for tonight.
Yeah, we have, uh, a list of policies. Uh, it's broken into two components. Uh, the first component is the, um. Governance section for the Board of Education, you know, statute of authority, nominations, et cetera. The second component of it is, so the duties of the appointments that we make to like our. You know, fiscal clerk, our treasurer, our school attorney, things like that. They're all like, it's, it's quite a few, but it. They mirrored very well, you know, county ones suggested plans. They actually mirrored, mirrored our. Original thoughts and our plans and policies. So that he brows forward in, um, tonight for first read on, you know. Under new business section, right?
You're asking for input from you directly?
Yes.
Right? Great, thank you. Nothing on GCEF, for the time being? All right, with that, Kevin, I'm sure you have the personnel. Other personnel, I'd like to add for consent motion for items eight point zero two to eight point one one. Any questions on any of the personnel items, substitutes, extracurricular advisors? Go on. See, we're getting fingerprints coming, okay? Okay, someone? Call of favor?
Hi.
Any votes?
All right. Under new business, I'd like to have for motions for items nine point zero two through.
Mm-hmm.
Nine. Nine point. Nine point zero five.
Nine point zero one.
Nine point zero one.
Zero one.
Yeah.
Five, yeah.
Nine point zero one.
That's your, sorry, that's your first expression. I think first read of the, uh, policies, nine point zero one, nine point zero five.
All right, uh, any questions on these? There is a, an approval of the service, the capital outline in here for the doors. Pretty important move forward on that. Uh, questions and anything else? Call of favor? Any of those?
Cool. Under section ten, the business office, like to ask for consent motion for items ten point zero two, ten point zero six.
Okay, then more to me in a second. I want to thank all those who have provided donations. Pretty significant donations here, so thank you to all. Both in tang from the Charmin family and so on, as well as the donations. Any other comments, questions? Call of favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Okay, so. Let's have a look. Hey, nothing on old business that were carrying. So with that, um, I don't have a lot to say tonight. I do know that as Superintendent Botk said, there was a third grade. Ornaments. I think that went pretty well, uh, this coming Wednesday. I know some of us have been volunteered to help put those ornaments on the tree and at the fountain, so that, that will take place. And then I don't know exactly when the tree lighting will be, but it's coming up in the next week. I do want to, what Superintendent Botk said about news, it's just, as I've already said once, but. What a great, 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 uh, show, presentation, musical. And, uh, the talent is just incredible. Of course, all those who work behind the scenes. And they tend to get ignored, but have done a tremendous amount of making that production possible.
Are you speaking about my family talent?
That, that was, I was gonna bring that up.
I was going to say, well, you're kind of outstanding.
It was, uh, yeah. You're, you're.
We're a good duo, aren't we, Megan?
Your ability to say, get out of here was tremendous.
Thank you.
I couldn't quite see where I was sitting. I, I thought that was you, but I couldn't.
There was.
There was some people in front of you.
Yeah, Jeff. Okay, I was honored to be asked, so it was fun.
And I think Mr. Rose, we can now call him. And I think Mr. Rose, we can now call him his honor.
Seriously.
He did, wasn't he?
He did.
Very well.
All right, without any other, Craig, that's a, you did a cameo as well.
Yeah, I missed, sorry, I didn't get to yours.
You got the Saturday night.
Is that on Saturday?
All right, yeah. We're getting ovation.
Yes. Get that out, we got more applause.
Was your family there?
Yeah, that or chumples, I don't know. They go on a laugh.
And I, I just want to just echo the, the sentiment to, to thank the, the teachers that are involved. It's a significant time commitment here. So, a shout out to them.
Absolutely. The tradition continues. All right, any other comments from anybody else for tonight? With that, I hope everybody had a great holiday. Welcome back and we're off and running and we're getting toward the rest of the year here.
I'd like to have a consent motion to move to executive session, special contract.
Call of favor? So moved, we're in executive session. Thank you, everybody.